Sorry.
Hi Hannah.
Yes.
Okay, you can hear us?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, we'll call the meeting's order and after that, anybody that's willing to be able to see.
The United States of America to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Could you thank everybody to the Wednesday, February 21st South Borough Planning Board meeting? Is there anybody here that wishes to make public comment, anything that's not on the agenda? Okay, anybody on Zoom has any comments for the planning board? If you have a minute for any, if you do, please just raise your hand on the Zoom screen so Jen can see.
No comment.
No comment?
Nope.
So we'll move on. We have approval of the meeting minutes from February 7th, 2024. I believe we were all there. Is there a motion on the February 7th?
I believe we approve the minutes from February 7th, 2024.
Second.
Okay, moved in seconded. Now, before I ask for a vote, is Aaron on?
He is not on. He's having difficulty signing in.
Okay, so we'll just do a vote here in person right now while the favors say aye. Okay, motion unanimous. Onto the one and only new item tonight, final plan review, MSP 22003. Does Mick have any new information that you need to alert us to? We've been around this one for a while. There anything new? We have the copy of the HOA. You gave us some updated stormwater plans. Is there anything new that's changed since we last met that you need to alert us to in terms of any of that?
Aaron.
Just to kind of move along in this, go to approval, talk about any potential conditions.
That's fine. Mr. Chairman, I'm Ken Woods from Adder Engineering. We're taking up the backseat in honor of the auditorium, Carol Mick. My client is here with us, Sandy Gay from Archipelago is here with us, Diane Moravito, who you've met via Zoom, but our traffic engineer is here, and Wyatt Page, who did our plans to see us. So any questions we'd be glad to answer. We've submitted our final plan, essentially the same plan you've been seeing, but I did want to introduce everyone in case there are any questions.
Thank you. Okay, do any board members have, before we enter into deliberation, do any board members have any questions to this? On your mind, burning in your mind, that you need to ask or look for clarification on?
I'm just sticking my crock moment.
Okay, well, why don't we talk about the approval process, what that looks like? Anything we can do tonight, you know, get some approval on this subject, the findings of fact, which is standard. Can you hear me okay? I'm trying to talk as loud as I can. Jen, what do these do? Do these work?
They should.
Does that do anything?
Get closer.
Anymore? Yeah, they change these too.
That's much better.
Much better? Okay. So now we're just having a conversation tonight about the final plan review. I don't necessarily think we have any questions on the final plan, not much to really report on, so I think we'll probably start moving this to the final approval process. And so that you folks are aware, we're going to probably talk about some potential conditions. Some of these should not come as a surprise, we've been talking about them from time to time. Some of the potential conditions that we're going to want to be replacing here is the industry drive route. And so we're going to work with our attorney on the specific language, but it is important to this particular project, as we've discussed it, as you presented, that industry drive would be brought up to the town of Burwick standards and serve as the access point, one of them for the development. And so that shouldn't come as a surprise. That's something that we'll be working on. Neil, of course, have an opportunity. Do we let the, they review the findings of fact, correct, don't they? Yeah, okay.
I always send them.
Yeah, which is a good track, sure.
Yeah.
Any changes, any from that, from this point forward, we need to come back to the board? So whatever we approve, we approved tonight. Anything deviating from that, we need to come back. Do you have a question?
No, I was just trying to fix.
I just wanted the board to know that Aaron Rouse, Bruce, whatever, he is on Zoom now.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Aaron.
Oh, no problem. Thank you.
What did he say?
He said, "Thank you."
You gotta get your mic down.
Do we have any resolutions on the water dishes? If not, we're just going to probably give them a little condition that you're going to have to come to a mutual agreement for them. Do we have anything on that? Because I know that's been kind of hanging out there for a while.
They did bring some questions back to us, we just received those recently. I'm sure we'll be able to get a resolution with the district. We had made an offer to them. I thought it was a generous offer. I believe they're considering the offer. I guess they haven't gotten it done.
Okay, so that would just end up being a generous?
Yeah, that was a condition of approval, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Stormwater, you gave us the stormwater plans, we're just going to make sure you do stormwater best practices. There's a couple of other things, you know, that we'd like to see in there as well, in no particular order, importance. I didn't see them, but they were kind of brought up from then to now. Is there going to be a bus stop? If so, where? What was the plan on that? Maybe there isn't, but what are you thinking, if anything? Mailboxes, were they going to be at the end of the driveway? Was it going to be a gang mailbox? If so, where? You know, how did you, what was the intent on that? If anything, we'd like to have that kind of clarified. It could be a condition, I think the CEO could prove that. You know, same thing with the bus stop, CEO could prove that. Letter from the school department on the capacity, we never saw that. You're shaking your head, doesn't mean that. But that's something that we should acquire with the school district. So that letter will be sent out, that will be a condition, just in terms of what they're thinking. We're going to need a cost estimate, we're going to do a bond, so there's going to be a cost estimate that's outlined in the ordinance. Yeah, I'm trying not to leak the mic when I'm talking, so. So anyway. Yeah, so we're going to have to, that's outlined in the ordinance. So follow that, you're going to have to work with, most likely, the road commissioner, town manager, as well as the code officer on that. There's, it's outlined in the ordinance. Let's see here. Building permits, we're going to need them, we're going to condition building permit issuance on the water district. Also, on the building of the road there, Industry Drive in Burwick, you're going to need to have that in order to mention that. And then last but not least, is the right-of-way, which has been a big topic of conversation. I think where we ended last week is the condition we'll place on you there is to have a single lane, both town standards, with a signage note through access, emergency access only.
Mr. Chairman, can I respond to that?
You had it, yes.
So the condition that, I know they've talked about it before, is unclear to me where this condition is coming from and where the support for it is. So if you were to do findings and say that we're placing this condition because of such and such section of the ordinance, and it's based on this evidence that we've received, my understanding is the evidence that you've received is that in using the town road of Meadow Pond, which the homeowners in this new subdivision are going to be paying taxes on, you know, paying taxes to help maintain and use that road for other people. It's not clear to me on what basis a condition that would not allow full access from this development onto Meadow Pond arises from, and how it's supported, you know, of course, talks about competent evidence, but really any evidence that using that road is somehow unsafe because of this development, or... I don't, I haven't heard anything that that condition would be based on relative to your zoning ordinance and requirements under cycling. So if you could provide me with that, that would be very helpful.
There are several areas here in the ordinance, and I'm looking under the subdivision review 12112, specifically sections E, H, and U. Well, 12144, street specifications, looking at item M subsection 2. And so my preference here would be to go, this board will forward these recommendations, the attorney's going to look at them. If the attorney also, if we're, if the attorney responds to us that somehow this may present a problem, I think we'll review that during the findings of fact stage.
So just so that I saw, I'm seeing the process.
Yep.
You're going to be stating what these conditions are tonight and the basis that you're making them on. But it's not, you're not going to, you're not going to vote on that and make it fine. We're going to send it to your attorney, have your attorney review that.
That's typically how we've always done that, of the findings of fact. We always wait, and we send the, we leave our findings of fact, and we have the attorney review that. And then he helps us formulate them.
And we'll have an opportunity.
Issues. We'll have an opportunity.
Provide comments to your attorney as well.
I would, yeah. Yep. I would think that that would be reasonable to have you have the opportunity to look at it. I'm okay with that. I think you should have that opportunity. And we'll weigh those at the next meeting as to whether or not there's validity to those. And I think we'll take appropriate action at that point in time. Pretty straightforward. I think it cuts to the chase. This is down what we believe our issues are, and we'll have the attorney witness.
No, I appreciate having the opportunity to do that and provide my comments to the attorney as well.
Yeah, I think that's probably the best way to handle it. Yeah, just kind of streamline everything and get the legal questions answered.
Right, and there's something we're talking about tonight that won't be part of that, so all this is for you then.
Yep, and this is what you're hearing tonight, is what you'll see. You'll have an opportunity to look at that before our next meeting, and anything could be ironed out at the end.
I appreciate that. I guess I would just ask that, again, when you make your findings, as you know, as complete as possible, so it may be, those are the findings that you can rely on.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, my question, I have several concerns with the condition. One thing, I believe that condition is contrary to what the ordinance requires. Your ordinance requires two means of access, so you're really putting my company in a position of assuming an awful lot of liability for trying to design and approve a subdivision that doesn't even meet the standards of your subdivision or zoning ordinance. Plus, I also think it's contrary to the fire chief, Nick Hamel's letter of February 14th, where he claimed, where he states that "All streets in Sandville, including both access points, should be built to town standards described in chapter 121, subdivision of land in the town code. Both access points must be properly maintained for year-round, 24/7, unimpeded access in the event of an emergency." And I just don't, you know, in 35 years of practice, I've never seen a board put an engineering company at risk because you're approving a subdivision. It doesn't need to ruin. I understand the condition, but I've never seen.
Yeah, that's so sure. I agree with you on that one.
Are there two means of access?
Access is not defined as to what that exactly means within the context of the ordinance. It doesn't, it says access, two means of access.
Really?
You have those two means of access. It doesn't define any further what that is and what it looks like. So there are two means of access. Access for what? Residents, emergency act, that will have emergency access.
Usually it's two means of access by roads that are designed to the town.
And so again, I think what we're looking here tonight is to put this forward, and all the findings of fact. You'll have the findings of fact to look at, and we'll have those further conversations with our attorney too, to see whether that's grounded in law.
I'm sorry, you were presenting South Borough, my clients have asked me that too.
Philip Sausier. Philip Sausier.
Can we get it on the record that this condition is contrary to the fire chief's?
No, his letter is submitted as part of the record. Your interpretation may be perhaps a little bit different than mine.
Well, when he said, I mean, it seems pretty straightforward when he says "Roads should be built to the town standards that's described in chapter 121 subdivision of land." I don't believe chapter 121 specifies a 12-foot wide single road.
I think we're going to determine what that is. I think if it's a 20-foot road, I don't think we settled at the last meeting as a 10, 12, 15, or whatever. Whatever is the requirement for what would be a single road.
So as far as something like the bus stop, that's a condition. I guess we would have to design that bus stop in accordance with this condition. So if the road, if the town road does not continue through to these dwellings in South Burwick, the children are put at risk by walking through this restricted road to get to Meadow Pond.
It wouldn't affect the current Meadow Pond. I don't know how the buses would run.
Why?
New area.
I doubt they're going to go through Burwick and North Borough to get to South Burwick then, would they?
I don't see how, so I believe that does happen often.
Oh, okay. Very interesting.
It's not uncommon for a bus to go through a different town, to get to another part of the town.
Too, it does happen. They actually have to go about 4.5 miles out of their way to get to the center.
It's actually closer, because the bus keep over a dead road.
Well, assuming they stop there. All right, Dan.
Yep, like I said, I think the safest way right now is to move forward with these findings, and you'll have an opportunity to weigh in them. And our attorney will assist us in that particular review as to whether or not what it is that we're requiring or suggesting is grounded in law. And so at least it gives us a point to move forward, keep the process moving. And I think that will set us up for the approval of the findings of fact at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Yep, and again, you'll have an opportunity to weigh in.
Thank you.
Does anybody want to add anything?
Oh, I did, this is the first time we got the homeowner association, and I think there's a few spots just to point out that it mentions Meadow Pond state, so I think we just changed it. No big deal, but I do have a question. Section 6, I'm not even sure who's going to talk to me, this is the attorney. Sorry.
Is there anything further?
Does anybody want to add anything?
Oh, I did, this is the first time we got the homeowner association, and I think there's a few spots just to point out that it mentions Meadow Pond state, so I think we just changed it. No big deal, but I do have a question. Section 6, I'm not even sure who's going to talk to me, this is the attorney. Sorry. It says, except, sorry, section 6, take 18, "No commercial activity of any kind shall be permitted there, except home occupations that do not require any client customer contact." So the town does actually have a major and a minor home occupation ordinance, but a lot of that assumes people see clients. So I can see why you carved this out maybe, but it just seems a little draconian to me. And you know, you're going to present these to, they're sort of a fate to complete before people have even built the house. So I'm just wondering about that, whether there's wiggle room on that.
Well, I guess what, are you asking, like, in the, what does it sound like?
Well, this is, no, this is, yeah, this is, this is just what you have to, the association, you agree to when you want to buy a house there. And you know, say you're, I don't know, a CPA, you meet with people once a week, you wouldn't be able to buy a house, so you're sort of weeding people out already, and that seems a little tough on people. And the other thing is...
The ordinance would allow it.
And the other thing is section 7 says, "No dwelling shall be constructed less than 1,800 square feet." And I'm sort of a little bit shocked that you've put a size, not that you don't want things to look nice or uniform, but you know, I live in a house that's, I don't know what, 15, it's a ranch house, it's a crappy ranch house from 1978, but you know, it's three bedrooms, it's perfectly comfortable, I'm sort of surprised you put a minimum limit, especially without a maximum limit. Is there a reason?
That's actually a spiritual, you can't help those limitations for different types of developments. Sometimes it's a minimum of 2,500. I mean, it really depends on the developer and what they're envisioning for their development to be.
You know, in the spirit of, I don't know, it's not like there'll be affordable units here, but obviously the bigger the house, the more expensive I assume it's going to be. I know it has to pencil out, but I would love it if you reconsidered making maybe the minimum smaller. Okay. Okay. Oh, and also there's a typo in section 9 where dogs, coags, and household pets are permitted. I'm going to assume that's caps. Okay, okay. That's it for me.
So next up there then is to move it to the final plan approval, your motion on MSP 22003. Approving the final plan, to the findings of fact.
Aaron Rouse has his hand raised.
Yes, thank you, Aaron.
Hey, I just also wanted to get a little bit of clarification. So for the final plan approval, when I was reading that fire's department letter, I was also reading it as that he was asking us to build everything to full, have two points of access with full.
Well, I can't because Buzz moved his chair. Aaron, hold on a second.
Yeah, no problem.
Start over, Aaron.
Yeah, I just wanted to get a little bit of clarification. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yeah, we have you microphone to go.
Okay, thank you. So are we going to get clarification from the fire department, fire chief? Because when I was reading that letter, I was also under the impression that he was asking and or requiring that we have two points of access with full city-sized roads there. Are we going to get further clarification on that?
We can. We can.
We will.
Okay, thank you.
Aaron, that is my understanding of the chief's letter as well.
Okay, yeah, I just don't, I'm kind of with the point. I don't know why we would be approving something for the fire chief does not think is safe. If it doesn't meet town, you know, that's my problem here. I think that we need to have addressed to make sure we have a chance to do that.
Can you guys hear what Aaron's saying? Okay.
You know, we'll get that clarified. That's fine. We'll clarify that as part of the findings of fact process. Can you hear me?
They're going to see clarify as a fact, okay.
And thank you whoever is sitting in for the owl. I'm not sure.
Well, it's me.
Oh, well, thank you. You're doing a great job as a director here.
I will take that compliment today. Trust me, it's been a long day. All right, moving on.
So is there a motion on the approval of MSP 22003, final point?
I don't know what we approve.
There a second?
A second.
Okay, yeah, I'm going to do a roll call, and Aaron, I'm going to start with you.
Hi.
I believe we approve the condition that I made.
Sure.
Aaron?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, we'll wrap up the findings of fact and get that to the court at the meeting, and we'll iron out the details.
So can I just ask a procedure question?
Hold on, can she come up to the mic?
This is a different process from the other one you're saying. So, so you're subject to approval of...
We're going to, the findings of fact are going to be drafted, and we're going to have to review by the attorney. We're going to clarify the chief's letter, and as far as we're concerned, we're done with the actual review. Now we're just going to put these actual conditions out and see if there's illegality to them.
So you...
If that's wrong, we'll probably get rid of it.
Okay, so that you've approved it with condition, so are you going to have to amend your approval?
It'll be addressed in the findings of fact, we'll move it to findings of fact.
Okay, so an amendment to your approval will be addressed.
Yeah.
Again, this is just a different procedure.
We just make it up as we go. No, it'll all be, the next meeting will be the approval and whatever necessary amendments may need to happen.
You guys can actually bring your final plan to be signed by the board at that time.
We needed to get this done so we could move it to the findings of fact and have those particular details worked out.
Okay.
Or your plan.
Would you anticipate we might get findings?
You'll probably be talking to the attorney in another couple of days.
Yep, March 6th will be the next meeting. Hannah's raising her hand.
Oh, am I up against the mic now?
You're on, you're mic'd up.
Okay, I was just going to say that if you're approving the project now, you should be approving it based on what you're saying the final plan is going to look like, which that roadway would change if you're going to dictate a different width of the roadway. So if you're going to place a condition on the roadway that's connecting to Meadow Pond, fine, but you should not be approving the final plan unless you've decided what that width is going to be. I thought we had decided that up to this point, but if you're not comfortable deciding on that, then you should not be approving the plan until that is ironed out.
Yeah, all right, point well taken. Yep.
So you guys will have to decide whether you go with Nick Hamel's letter, because, Hannah, are you all set? Okay, hold on. So you guys will have to decide if you're going to go with Nick Hamel's letter that says, "Full standard, 22 feet," right, Hannah, "22 feet wide, paved, not obstructed, no parking, all the things that he wants." Or if you're going to say, "Nope, we're going to go 15 feet wide, one lane, signage, no throughway." Those are the two options here.
I don't think that actually captures it, because I believe you could do exactly what the parts you said and still put a sign on that says, "Only for emergencies."
Well, he said that that was fine as long as it was built to standard, which would have been the 22 feet. So that's what Hannah's saying, I think. Right, Hannah?
Yeah, I, my reading of the fire chief's letter is that he wants full town standard of a local, sorry, I don't remember the exact term, local residential, something like that road, which would be 22 feet. You can put the signs there that say, you know, "No through traffic, no commercial traffic," things like that, but the road itself needs to be built and not obstructed at all times so that it was a traditional throughway in the case of emergencies.
Yeah, because that's the town standard.
Which is 22 feet wide. Okay, then that's fine.
I think we captured that.
So Hannah, is that okay? Is that all good? Yes. Okay. 22 feet wide, yep.
Whatever we said the town standards were.
Yep.
Okay. There you go.
Yeah, from either way, there'll either be the conditions, and you'll get to review them, and then we'll have full approval at the next meeting, and we can prove it down, then review the condition, and prove those as pending for the next meeting.
Right, yeah, I guess I would, I would edit out all the five.
We'll be out here, I think, you know, I think the approval, I think we have a total fine. I don't think we need to change the plan there. I think the issue is going to be is how it's really ultimately, they have sun, and that's going to be the condition, that's, but no through access. And I think that's going to be where we're going to end up. I don't see the need to change the plan as, you know, what Hannah was saying earlier. We're not changing, we're going to say two town standards.
Well, it looks like a loose place. Jen, can you answer that?
The fire chief's letter is on to ensure the road meets the requirements of his limits?
Well, the road on our plan meets the standards.
Okay.
That's right.
Yeah.
We don't need to change.
Yeah.
We're good.
Okay.
We're good.
It's just.
My, you know, my concern is if there's no through traffic, that it doesn't meet the ordinance, but that's different than my, that's different than the question that doesn't meet the fire chief's letter. My concern is that forcing all the traffic through Industry Drive does not mean that, does not meet the ordinance requirement for two means of access, but it does meet the fire chief's letter. And I stated that concern 10 minutes ago.
And we'll have to clarify that.
Yeah.
That might accent in there. Okay, all right, I think we have a point of moving forward.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we have a clear point of moving forward without asking to change anything. I think it's gonna come down to that. By purpose of the issue of our findings, we're gonna clarify from the attorney and from there.
All right.
And then we just have them, we'll come back and make any necessary amendments if we're told we're in the wrong before our final thing. Yep, we'll make public, so that's been, that's done. The final plan has been approved. I don't see the need for any changes. Just to be clear, the findings of fact will be drafted and they'll come out prior to the next meeting. And you'll have enough opportunity to look at, happy to engage in a two-way conversation.
Hannah, I'll try to get them to you on Friday. As early as Friday. If they don't come on Friday, they'll come over the weekend to you. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, so hang on, let's just kind of follow here. That's been approved. Is there any old business? No old business. I'll entertain another public comment period.
Thank you, sir. Um, so again, procedural question. You're gonna provide these findings of fact to the client here. They're gonna have an opportunity to review those. Our attorney and the homeowners association, there have been several letters sent with conditions we were looking for also to be considered conditions for approval. And just curious how those may or may not be addressed. And given that we put those forward, will the homeowners association also have an opportunity to review these documents as they go forward, or is it only gonna be the client gets an option? Conditions.
So I mean, it's, it's a bit complex. Yeah, so Jen, you'll provide a copy to Mark Morse.
For what, findings of fact? Yeah, I just want to put it out there that the conditions of approval need to be on the final plan anyways before the board signs it. So they need them ahead of time anyway. Okay?
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
You have to put in a request in writing for us to send those to Mark. Send it right to my email. Just send me an email, who you want it to go to. That's who it will go to.
Thanks, Jen.
Yeah.
Looking at Mark's comments, I think they're setting, you know, with a lot of the intent, what he's looking for, I think, you know, would be that.
At the last meeting with the cell box back in November, I made the comment after it had, you know, put forward that perhaps the Meadow Pond access would only be for emergency access. And my statement at that meeting was, if that in fact ends up being the final decision that the Meadow Pond access not dated but signed appropriately for emergency access only, then 99% of the conditions we had requested that were all safety related would be moved at that point. So again, that's why I want to see exactly where things are gonna stand. Because if in fact we're gonna end up with, you know, a restricted access, emergency vehicles only, most of our, all of our concerns go away. So that's why I just want to see it as we go forward.
Did we forgot, I don't see a reason why you said that.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything further?
Hold on, before you adjourn, I do have a few things for you guys.
Sure.
Are you ready now? There is a new application that's coming in front of the planning board on March 6th. It's for a dog kennel on Emory's Bridge Road. It's a dog kennel and boarding place. It's called South Burick Boarding, so he will be there. And then we have a potential new restaurant coming in front of the board. I will let you know as that application comes in, but we did receive the first application.
Where is it taking, April?
No, because that doesn't need to come in front of the board unless they make changes, because they're already a restaurant. Yep. Main Street.
Has anybody here ever done a dog kennel?
Pretty straightforward. The application is pretty complete. And then there is another massage business also coming in front of the board, probably in April. So we are seeing like a lot of changey use coming up if they submit their documentation for that. So just want to tell you guys.
Thanks.
And this new meeting time is awesome. It's only 7:05, just saying.
A little tough on the front end, but.
Aaron, we hope you have a good vacation.
Anything further?
No.
Is there a motion to adjourn? All favor, okay, motion, we're adjourned.